That one was sent to everybody, but she individually sent it.
Oh, everybody did get it.
That I know.
So when we come in here too. You want to, um... All.
Is she handling it?
She's right there, yeah.
Here.
They are in, but they are...
Mayor Protem Garcia.
I couldn't say Mayor Protem.
That's just me.
Sounds good to me. Sounds good to me.
That's what she did for the last year or so, couple of years ago.
They're like Mayor Protem.
It is now 5:00 PM, January 16th, 2018. And I called to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Gomez?
Good evening.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Negretti, absence is noted. Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54956.9D2 state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone wanting to address the Council therefore. Can we have a declaration of closed session items by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. There are nine items listed, however, it really pertains to three matters since several of these items are related. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. The facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. Item B and C on behalf of the City Council are related to items H, I, J, and K on behalf of the Airport Authority. That is all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 and the case names and case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. Item D for the City Council is related to item L on behalf of the Airport Authority. Again, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 and again, the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. We will now recess to our closed session and regular session convened at 6:00 PM.
I'm going to call this meeting to order with just a brief introduction. I'm going to...the mayor has asked that I conduct this meeting. She had an eye procedure. And if it's dim, she has a hard time seeing right now, but if it's bright, brightness hurts the eye because of the procedure, nothing serious. But she does need a small healing time. So gladly, we'll conduct this meeting. Thank you all for being here. And I'm going to ask the City Clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Gomez?
Good mor...good evening.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Negretti?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
This time, we will have the closed session announcement by the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. We had nine items, however, most of these were related items. Item A on behalf of the City Council was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. The facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C on behalf of the City Council are related to items H, I, J, and K, which is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case names and case numbers are fully set forth on the agenda. And then lastly, item D is related to item L on the...on behalf of the Airport Authority. Again, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 and again, the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. I think there's a typo, there's a couple of items missing that we did not go into closed session on. With respect to those items, there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We're now going to have the, excuse me, invocation, pledge allegiance. The invocation will be...will be delivered by Father Pat Travers from Holy Anson's Church, and the pledge by Chief John Shuler. I would...could ask everyone to please stand and... Reverend, if you'll come to the microphone, please, thank you.
Let's power heads and pray. Prepare this evening for God's blessing for all of us in this new year. First, let the City Council and all of us here tonight take a moment to thank God for last year, the good and the bad. And let us be grateful for the good and ask its forgiveness for where we have failed. Because of your mercy, we all have the opportunity to start anew, no matter what has gone on before. So as we begin our new year, let our resolutions for 2018 begin by striving to do what is right for our fellow man, help us to show compassion for each other, and help us to insist on justice and equality for all, reminding us always of the teachings of your son, that whatever you do to the least of our brothers, you do for him. Give this council in this new year, first, to always keep in mind that they are a reflection of our great city of Victorville, our state, and our country. Second, because of the positions they hold, their constituents expect a higher requirement of moral standards. And thirdly, they must not take advantage of or misuse the power that comes with the positions they hold. And so we also ask, Lord, that as they perform their legislative agenda, keep the minds of the mayor and the City Council focused on why they were elected to these positions, and always strive to make a profound difference in our community. Amen. Congratulations to the... And the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'd ask the City Clerk to present the agenda. We do not have any proclamations or presentations tonight. And Madam City Clerk, will you present the agenda? And are there any revisions, if there are any?
City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the Council on specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the Council Chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or groups who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any persons or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the Council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to Califor...California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 503. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the Council. Following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. There's one revision to item number D5. It's job description for fire chief. Those are all the revisions I have.
Question, Madam Clerk? The...that change is reflected in the handout to the Council?
Yes.
Any questions of the Clerk? No questions. We do not have an appeal hearing. We'll go to the public hearing. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the HUD Community Planning and Development CPD grants for fiscal year 2018-19. Madam Clerk, recommendation?
Mr. Cox, I have a client who is a...of the applicants here, so I'm going to recuse myself.
You have a client that's one of the applicants. Heard of the attorney because there's a whole breadth of request discussions that's going on, and a lot of app...a lot of organizations will be discussed. And make sure that you do not deny yourself there are to discuss items where you don't have a conflict.
You could bifurcate the item and discuss the one item. However, I'm not sure how it's been set up in terms of the process. You have potential people that are going to be commenting on it, so it's going to be hard to tell, I guess, unless you know specifically who the client would be.
Well, this has come up every year for seven years, and I've always recused myself, so I'm just going to stay with this.
Okay.
That is...that is the...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for clarifying that. Are there any questions from the Council to the staff? Sorry. I interrupted before you got... Foundation, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
The City Council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen and agency comments regarding the city's needs and strategies for the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan and allow prospective applicants an opportunity to share their needs.
Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions from the Council to the staff for clarification or in regard to the staff report?
Yeah, I have a comment in regards to this item.
Question the staff or a comment?
It's just a comment. And this is just for everyone's review as well.
Go ahead.
So on this item B1, the federal housing and urbanized development, community planning, and development grants are available for the city departments of Victorville and nonprofit organizations, along with other organizations that assist the very low, low to moderate income persons. In 1997, the city of Victorville became an entitlement city, receiving direct funding from HUD. This allows the city to administer these grants through funding programs like community block grants and home part...and home partnership programs to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities, principally for low and moderate income persons. Historically, we've seen that the city departments, like the library or the police departments, apply and become eligible. City departments like the library and the police have not historic...historically overlapped with the jobs that many nonprofits do in the community for public service projects. For instance, the library may have a tutoring program that allows children and teens to have after-school hours to learn and engage successfully with their educational endeavors. The police department has also applied for community development grants. And it is my understanding that when the city of Victorville finds city departments to be eligible to have funds distributed to them, the general city funds are freed up where those monies could now go to other needs of the city. We all know that the majority of the general fund money goes to public safety, which includes police and fire, a 100% subsidized service to the public. I encourage more nonprofits to step forward and apply next year for community block grants, home partnerships, and community housing development organizations and other funding programs. Those that are interested in assisting public service projects, first-time down payments, senior assistant programs, are also encouraged to apply. I also encourage you to ask about SBA for small business help. The city is a resource at your disposal and may be a key tool for you to get ahead in your current circumstances. These efforts are in collaboration from the federal HUD funding programs, consortiums with other cities, and the low to moderate income persons in the city of Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no questions to the staff in regard to the recommendations or the staff report. I'm going to open the public hearing on item B1. I do have cards. If you want to address item B1, please fill out a card and submit it to the clerk. At the present time, if I have counted this correctly, I have five speakers. Maybe six, hang on. Five. And so I'm going to call on you as I have received. The first is Matthew Letier. Come up. And you have three minutes. Following Mr. Letier is...I can't hardly read, this is darker. Marilla Reese, you'll be prepared to come up, following Matthew. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name's Matt, and I'm from Family Assistance Program. The application we submitted is for a case manager for our youth drop-in center that we just opened up on C Street in Old Town Victorville. The drop-in center provides a safe place for youth to congregate and learn meaningful ways for socializing with each other and with adults. It also engages them in volunteer opportunities and job searches and resume building. The case manager position itself, though, will help youth learn how to set goals for themselves and learn how to plan for their futures when so many of them don't understand how to do that. And they'll learn how to set short-term goals in order to reach their long-term outcomes. For instance, if they fill out a job application and they get an interview, but they don't get the job, a case manager can help point out to them that getting the interview is a big achievement in itself, and this helps keeps them motivated. As case managers also assume the position of a life coach. They also help with us coordinating our services. And the FamSpot has a lot of services and partners with a lot of organizations, but it doesn't have that key liaison that we're looking for. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next speaker, and I hope I pronounce this right. Mary Lee, thank you. Reese, and following Gary Madden. Be prepared to come up. Go ahead, please. Hold that, thank you.
Mayor and council members, first, I want to thank you for the last several years of your support for High Desert Transitional Living Connection. And I just have a couple of items that I wanted to bring to your attention. First, I'd like to say that over the past year, the influx of extremely low-income and families and individuals has increased, pretty much almost 1,000 individuals per quarter. So we're looking at higher numbers of people to serve over the next year. And secondly, because of that, our cost of goods has increased. I think that across the board, it's just something that's happened, not just in our community, but over the United States. So I'm asking that you look at that when you read my application, that you take that into consideration, that there is a need for more funding. And also, I'd like to say that in this new year, we're going to be collaborating with the Gate Church of the High Desert to help the re-entry inmate program. And that will be services like life skills, resume writing, job search, and even sometimes maybe housing, if we can help them with housing. So there's a lot to look at, and we look forward to working with you again this year, and we thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gary Madden.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmen, staff, and the audience. I am Gary Madden. I am the director of the United Way 211 Hotline that the county operates. And about 14 months ago, 15 months ago, something fantastic changed. And there are a lot of great organizations up here in the high desert area that are doing a lot of good work on very small budgets and shoestring operations. In particular, the...those who are housing people who are experiencing homelessness. And in the past, they have been doing their best to house who they knew they could help, which tended not to be the hardest to serve, which tended not to be those that are affecting the business environment and the culture of the city of Victorville. But HUD has required that each continuum of care have a coordinated entry system to actually pull all these agencies into a system where now, we, in the last 14 months, the objectives of the continuum of care is that we have a priority list. And those that are hardest to serve, the chronically homeless. Those that are most vulnerable are at the top of the list. And in the past 14 months with this new system, more than 350 people in the county have been housed, and more than 100 of them are actually the chronically homeless, those that have been hardest to serve and have had chronicity of homelessness of 17 years, 20 years. But the hub of this coordinated entry system is, that's our operation. And we are spread pretty thin countywide. So what we've asked with the CDBG funds is to actually have a part-time person dedicated to the city of Victorville. This would mean that we have a person who can actually do the street outreach, the assessment, working with the agencies, building housing plans, all of the tools that we use that are successful now, directed to the city of Victorville. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrelita Charbonne.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Andrelita Charbonne. I've been working for over a year with Cassandra Black as the new direct client outreach for San Bernardino Sexual Assault Services in Victorville. And before then, I contributed as a volunteer, so I know our office gets very busy as we provide programs and services within the high desert communities. So I just want to share briefly some of the highlights of the programs within the Victorville area. We've been focusing some of our attention on the male population with our Men of Strength program. And we started with two support groups and then transitioned those support groups into workshops for the males with great success. And we're now offering those support groups to our veteran population as we collaborate with the Victorville Veterans Administration. For the youth, we've introduced the Heart Program, which is aimed at helping our youth gain perspective on their own needs as well as help them discuss about topics that they may not be able to freely talk about within other settings. So we've introduced this with our Kinship Helping Hands, as well as within the Juvenile Probation Department's Grace Program. And we've even had a success story with a teen who was in a troubling relationship, a very dangerous one. And after just one workshop, this teen was so intensely impacted that they disclosed the abuse. And then they were...provided the appropriate help needed to get them out of that situation. For our teens, we're offering the opportu...we offered the opportunity for them to create their own messages on sexual violence among teens. And in turn, they created a video that was viewed by other teens as inspiration against sexual violence. And as we continue to identify community needs, our agency did co-sponsor an equestrian event within our community with a collaborative. And we had over almost 100 survivors and their loved ones come out to this event titled Survivor Standing Together. And this just shows that there is a need for survivors and their loved ones to come together and support of each other. And we were able with this event to provide that need within the community. So we will still be having another very busy year as we provide programs and services with already established and newly developed collaboratives. So we do appreciate all past support that you've been able to offer and do welcome any new upcoming support you may be able to give us this year as well. So thank you for allowing me to share any questions, but I don't think...
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next speaker, I can't read the first name, Marna, from the food bank? Is that correct? Anna? Oh, that must be you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, distinguished citizens, thank you... Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, distinguished citizens, thank you so much for this opportunity. We're very happy to once again come before you and present our CDBG grants in order to support our expansion food bank program to the Victorville area. As you well know, AB 341 was passed in order to prevent 40% of food waste going into the dumps and these type of things. Desert Manor has a very successful track record as the largest independent food bank in Southern California in providing food service to the whole high desert. We provided 890,000 pounds of food to schools, to food, I mean, food pantries, to senior citizen areas, to Meals on Wheels, to after-school programs, summer sack lunch programs, and we were highly successful, and 25% of that was done in the Victorville area. So we are appealing to you through our grant process to put in a food bank here in the Victorville area. We are looking at a couple of buildings that are sitting as blight buildings, and in order to expand this program. We have very successful contracts with Feed the Children, MOUs with Feed the Children, Feeding America, Community Action Partnership, Fort Irwin, the Marine Corps Logistics Space, Walmart. We have an excellent track record with working with these organizations, and including State of Brothers. They have asked us, can you please come to the Victor Valley area? We believe that what we're proposing here to support your community is to provide a tremendous amount of fresh produce that goes to the dump. And let's get this out to senior centers, let's get this out to our kids, let's get this out into produce markets so that there's not a waste. Who's to benefit? Low to moderate income. And in the state of California, that includes an awful lot of people right now. So we want to be able to keep this food from going to waste, make these partnerships work up here in the Victor Valley. We are very organized with these organizations. We have a refrigerated truck, we have the logistics in order to do this. We also have contracts with Food Forward in LA. We secure over 30,000 to 40,000 pounds of fresh produce from the produce market that's on its way to the dump. There's absolutely nothing wrong with this food. It is excellent food, but it's overproduced. We need it to come out here for our community. We need to be able to provide summer sack lunches to these school districts during the summertime, free of charge to our kids in need. We need to be able to provide food to our senior centers and our Meals on Wheels. We have these partnerships. We want to expand here. So we appeal to you through the CDBG grants, and we applied for two, by the way, in order to get your assistance and work that partnership. And we want to be able to put this in a building that suits your needs, such as perhaps the Target Building or Ralph's that's sitting empty, in order to make this work. Anyway, thank you for consideration.
Thank you for your presentation on behalf of Desert Manor. Thank you. Stephanie Pizarro.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here today on behalf of the St. Joan of Arc Church, who's applying for a CDBG grant for construction. The goal of the St. Joan of Arc Church is to invest and work with the city of Victorville and invest in a community, which is the Old Town Victorville or the downtown Victorville area, which is heavily in need of investment. I don't have to tell council that this area has seen a high degree of de-investment within the last few years. This high rate of de-investment has led to residents in the community feeling unsafe and turning to each other to provide for safe spaces in Old Town Victorville. Something that we don't speak about in the area is that 83% of the residents in the neighborhood are living below the poverty line. The median income for the families in this neighborhood is of $27,000. And just to put it in perspective, the median income for the city of Victorville as a whole is $47,000. This community is really looking towards each other to help build a safe and positive environment. We're very thankful for the St. Joan of Arc for wanting to invest in this community and turn around a building that has seen a high amount of blight in the neighborhood. We hope that by this church investing, and the city investing, and the community investing in this one building, we can set an example for the rest of the buildings down on the commercial corridor to serve not just for a space where the community can congregate, but also to bring economic investment into the neighborhood. This is a very daunting project, so the application submitted today is only looking at phase one, but we hope that with your help and with the help of future investors, we can rebuild the unity of Old Town Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. Have there any more cards been turned in in regard to this item? No more cards. Question to staff before close of public hearing, the instructions in front of me is to conduct the public hearing, allow all the prospective applicants an opportunity to share, but there's no mention of whether or not this hearing is ended now or continues.
It'd be appropriate to close the public hearing.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing since there's no other speakers, there's no other cards. And now that we have received additional information from the applicants and members of the audience, are there any comments from the council members? And before I ask those comments, have a motion and a second? Can we have a motion on this item? You have a motion? We have a second? Move the staff report. We have...
I don't believe we need a motion on this. It's just to receive the information.
That's okay.
You're going to designate people later on.
Okay. So we don't need a motion on it? So before I continue this on, I'm closing the hearing. And we have any comments from the council members? Comments? The next step of this procedure is what, staff?
That would be item D1. That is on the agenda tonight would be the selection of two council members to sit on the committee to review the applications. The application period ended last week, and we are sorting the applications, getting them ready for committee review. That committee, we hope to meet in early February, and then return back to the council for the actual allocations shortly after.
The council will appoint two individuals from the council to sit. Is that a part of this item, or is that an item later on in the agenda?
Separate item. D, oh, I'm sorry, D as in dog, one. I'm sorry, if it was sounding like B1, yes.
Okay, so it's D and we're on B. So there's no further action on this item?
No.
Correct.
Very much. Council, we will move on then to the second item, which is a public hearing and to conduct a special landowner election for the establishment of a community facilities district and to authorize the levy of special taxes. Yes, we have a procedure that is a little bit lengthy, but probably only lengthy to us and complicated to us, but we have to follow this very carefully. There's a lengthy staff report before we open the public hearing. Are there any questions from the council? If you have any questions of the staff, please ask it now. If you have comments, please hold those comments until after the public hearing, and you will have another opportunity to make your comments. Any questions of the staff regarding the staff report? No questions at this point in time. I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing to conduct a special landowner election for the establishment of a community facilities district and to authorize the levy of special taxes. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone to speak on this item?
Mayor Protam, would also be appropriate to ask if there are any protests received. I don't believe the city has received any, but if anybody in the audience has a protest, this would be the time to submit it.
Okay, for the record, do we have any of the landowners have provided a protest or want to protest at this time? I do not have that information. I don't have any information, so I'll ask the clerk.
No.
Prior to the establishment of this public hearing, have you received any protests from the landowners?
No protests.
And I guess the next step is to make sure that Mr. Kennedy joins council. I will close the public hearing. Since there are no one to speak on this item. I'm going to ask the city clerk, because there's several resolutions, to read the procedure that the council must follow now that the public hearing is concluded. Starting with item number two, Madam Clerk.
Item number, I'm sorry.
You don't have it, I do. I'll read it. The next thing for the council to do is to adopt a resolution number 18-002 establishing the formation of a community facilities district, followed by three, adopt resolution number 18-003 calling for a special landowner election for a community facilities district.
Would it be appropriate to take those two items first and then ask for the results of the election?
And my understanding is those two items can be taken together if there's no one objects? Well, we'll take them separately, just to keep the record straight. Question with council? No questions? We have, we need a motion for the adoption of resolution number 18-002.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion second. Comments from the council members? No comments? Call vote, please. Off a roll, call vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
We didn't ask for the vote first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
No no's, it's carried unanimously. The next item is adopt resolution number 18-003 calling a special landowner election for the community facilities district. Are there any comments from the council members prior to voting on the matter?
Yeah, Mr. Cox, I don't know if this is clear, the people sitting us out there listening to us move through this, but this is a community facilities district related to the Foxborough industrial development. It's only the properties located in that development that are affected by this, and they've all decided they wanted to do it.
Yeah, I think a very good point. Thank you very much. This is for the maintenance of the railroad track that's behind the old AFG plant going down behind the Goodyear tire. It affects no one except the property owners that are in the area, and the property owners have requested this, and that's why we don't have any objections from landowners. It's not voters, but landowners are the only ones who may vote or object. Sorry, should have explained that earlier. There's no comments. We need a motion and a second for 18-003.
Move adoption of 18-003.
Second.
Okay, rather than a roll call vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No no's, it's carried. Now we conduct the special landowner election. And...
At this time, would it be appropriate for the city clerk to count the votes and determine whether or not you have a majority vote, two-thirds, at least two-thirds in support?
All ballots are voted yes, with 100% in favor.
There were no objections from the landowners?
No objections.
There was 100% yes?
That we received, yes.
And the next is adopt the resolution number 18-004 declaring the results of a special landowner election directing the recording of a special tax lien. There's no comments from the council? Motion in a second is in order?
Move the item. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the ayes is unanimous, or no no's? Last item. Introduce ordinance number 2377 for the adoption in first reading, and I don't have that in front of me. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, state of California, authorizing the levy of special taxes in community facilities district. Ordinance number 2377.
We can get a motion and a second. I'll ask for comments from the council. Open for a motion and a...
And that motion hopefully would include the waiver of reading of the entire ordinance.
Make that motion and waive the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
For the introduction of ordinance number 2377 for adoption in first reading. Waive the reading, was that included?
That was part of the motion, yes.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council?
Yes. How many? I do. How many ballots were received with the landowners that were located at the Foxborough plant, where we're suggesting that it needed a two-thirds vote to have the CFD and have the special tax levied? Is that what just transpired when you said 100% was yes?
The total amount of votes received was 157.
157?
Mm-hmm.
So we had 157 parcels or acreage, right? Is that what we're talking, okay?
Yes, it was one vote per acre, so of the people within the district, you have 170, 100 and...
157.
157 in favor, and nobody was opposed. Nobody cast ballots in opposition.
No further questions, thank you.
We have conducted the public hearing. There was no protest filed at the public hearing. We've conducted the election, there were no protests filed. Is there any further action that the council takes, Mr. Attorney? Okay, we have the, we had a motion and a second. We had comments from the council. What we have is to vote on the introduction of ordinance 2377. Does that require a roll call vote, Mr. Attorney?
No, just a...
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. There are no no's, and this item is concluded. Thank you very much. Please, that concludes all of the action on that particular item. Is that correct?
That is correct. The ordinance will come back for a second reading at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. We go to the consent.
I'll move the consent calendar.
We have a motion to approve the consent, which are four items. So if we, do we have a second?
Second.
No request, or is there a request for comments to remove any of those items or any questions in regard to any items on the consent calendar? Thing is, there is not... Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and all the consent items are therefore approved. Written communications is the next item. Number one for the written communication is to appoint two council members to serve on the Community Planning and Development Grants Review Committee. We had this public hearing initially, first item on the agenda to talk about the grants. I'm not sure how long ago, I think it was just three or four years ago, that the city council agreed to have two council members serve. And at this point in time, Madam Clerk or staff, remind me, who are the two council members that currently sit on this, before I proceed?
Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Eric Negretti. And...
And then, before we proceed, this is an appointment by the city council. The city council has the option of appointing new members or reaffirming the same two members. It's up to the city council. Chair, is there any questions from any of the council members at this time? Thing is that there are no questions. We have a motion, we need a motion and a second.
Move to appoint this...
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to appoint the same two. Are there comments from the council?
Yes, I have comments. So I can understand the significant time requirement that this committee would expect, and I would like to nominate myself to the review committee. Let me show you how things can unintentionally become status quo. Four years ago, the subcommittee was comprised of Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Vaez. The following year, Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Negretti headed up that committee and have continued to direct the committee together in the last few years. And it is important to have different perspectives and life experiences in order to serve the low-income more efficiently. And I want to summarize what Dr. Rita Jackson stated on Martin Luther King's birthday. Sometimes we have to come down these platforms to really know what types of challenges people face. Blanket solutions don't help everyone, and so it's crucial that we catch those that fall between the cracks. I don't believe it to be an intentional thing, and I want to take on that task. If there were one thing that'll allow me to serve my community best, it would be to serve at that capacity. I would like to make the motion to nominate myself.
There being no...
There was a substitute motion, there was no second to the motion. Motion fails for lack of a second. There is a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Ms. Garcia, Mayor Garcia, and Councilmember Negretti to this committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No's?
Here, no.
There is four yes, one no. Thank you very much. The next item is item number two. This is under the written communication agenda, item number two. The Planning Commission requests the city council to participate in upcoming workshops regarding a general plan amendment to modify street cross-sections within the circulation element. There is a lot that could be discussed, but the question before the city council is whether or not you want to agree to a joint meeting.
I would like to do this, so if you want a motion, I'll make it.
Yes, I'm prepared.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to agree to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Do we have any comments from the council members?
I have questions, not comments.
Questions? Questions.
Yes, I do. So for this item, why did the planning commissioners request the presence of council to be a part of the city's circulation element? Why weren't the non-motorized elements that already are a part of the circulation map done beforehand? They were in two thousand eight. Is this collaboration effort between planning commissioners and the city council? And would you provide an example of retrofitted right-of-way widths in comparison with the proposed streets? Cross-sections that would apply to undeveloped areas in the city? And are the costs exuberantly high for the BIA when it comes to the abiding by the two thousand eight general plans circulation element? Have developers had concerns between two thousand eight before this was the actual issue that was raised recently? Was it brought up in the past? How many workshops totaled our plan before the issues get resolved collaboratively between interested parties, primarily council, the planning commission, developers and other stakeholders? It is my understanding that the general plan is up this year for modification unless the city applies for an extension of the plan. Is anyone aware of the restrictions and the upcoming requirements? Has anyone through the, through these concerns with the changes of the circulation? Know that when you begin to piecemeal the general plan, it just falls apart? That was my understanding when I was reading the general plan, those are all my questions.
Thank you, Mayor, council members.
Staff, are you prepared to answer those questions now?
Yes, I can go through those.
Go ahead, please.
Um, with regard to the request from the planning commissioners to be a part of the circulation element update. Ultimately, a, a change to our circulation element is a change to our general plan that requires council action. So if the planning commission, uh, developed a plan for new street designs and a void without your feedback, that would eventually, uh, come to you as a recommendation. So the planning commission is trying to, uh, get you involved and get your feedback upfront, so everyone's on the same page as these, uh, changes, if any, or occur, uh, would be, uh, in accord with what the council is seeking. The non-motorized transportation plan, uh, was a grant that was awarded by SCAG. Uh, it did not include in its development the implementation of it into our general plan. So we have our general plan and we have this non-motorized transportation plan that hasn't been quite implemented yet into our general plan. So for, for the city to require developers to conform to that non-motorized transportation plan, we have to include it into the city, the city's general plan. With regard to retrofitting, uh, we can get into more detail, our staff report for the planning commission was included as an attachment. And there was some different examples of a retrofit cross-section compared to a proposed cross-section, as well as the existing cross-sections within our general plan. Um, the BI, BIA, um, has not provided any data so far about, um, the cost for right-of-ways. We can request that and have it available at a, at a, uh, future workshop if that's, uh, is that, if that's something that the council seeks. Um, the development community did voice concerns, uh, when the city had, uh, discussions about our single-family design guidelines. One of the discussion points was about, um, the edge, the edge conditions of our neighborhoods and improvements that could be made to our streetscape. Um, so it didn't go on further than that, but we do at this point have before us a, a circulation, uh, non-motorized transportation plan, um, that needs to be im- implemented into our general plan. And, um, we also have bike lanes that are, that are being striped within our existing right-of-way, but we don't account for those in, for future development. Let's see, um, there was also, um, a point about collaborating, um, i- if it's part of the process. And, and yes, there has been joint workshops before between the planning commission and city council. The most recent one was in two thousand and fourteen regarding our, our, uh, city's, uh, single-family design guidelines, and those have since been implemented. Uh, right now, there's tentatively two workshops, uh, planned for, one on February fourteenth and, and March fourteenth, from three to four-thirty PM in conference room D. Um, but we can arrange another, uh, date and time if, if the council, uh, requests that. Um, regarding the ten-year cycle of our general plan, our general plan was adopted in two thousand eight, so if it was a requirement for ten years, we'd be doing it today. Um, we're unaware of any pending statute that would require us to update our, our overall general plan. Historically, cities have, have updated their, their overall general plan in fifteen to twenty-year cycles. And then, um, regarding piecemealing, one, uh, one section regarding the street sections without addressing the, the overall development. This, cities commonly address and modify components of the general plan. Any modification we make though has to be, uh, in accord with the overall general plan. But it's common practice to analyze one component and change a component of that without addressing, uh, the overall development standards or like, for example, the street, uh, lane capacity. Were available if you have any other questions?
Thank you very much, the question, as I indicated, the question here is whether or not the city council is in agreement to hold such a meeting. I'm sure these, these questions and other questions will come up at that meeting. I, uh, I, I think it's good that the planning commission is asking the council to have a joint meeting so that it doesn't go from the planning commission to the council after public hearings, back to the planning commission. It serves, it would be a delay, and by holding the joint workshops together, I think it'll speed up the process so that developers and landowners alike will know what the final decision is at a more appropriate time. So we have no more discussion.
Mayor Protem Cox. Have a quick, quick question, please. Um, I'd like to thank the planning commission for suggesting this. If you're going to do something like this, uh, it's pretty complicated. And, uh, I agree with Mayor Protem Cox's comments, rather than going back and forth, um, seeking guidance, why not just do it together? Uh, and make it effective and efficient for us. Because when we do a policy like this, we're gonna get phone calls. And we do this constantly where, with the rental business licenses. Uh, something gets enacted and there's major impacts. And so, I'm not sure, uh, when we talk about bike lanes, what's appropriate and where they're appropriate. I don't want this city to have a fanatical view of things like that and just have bike lanes for bike lane's sake all over the city. You're talking about right-of-way requirements, width of streets are very important. So I think really what I'd like to see in the future, so that we don't get into these, um, difficult situations. Uh, if we're going to do something, um, sometimes a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work necessarily when you try to implement something. And so coming back to the council for, 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 uh, additional guidance is absolutely welcome at all times. Meeting with the planning commission is welcome at all times, in my opinion. Uh, because the last thing I want to have happen is somebody else deciding what the city of Victorville's doing when that's exactly why we're here and we're available. This is exactly what we should be doing, so I'm looking forward to it. And I got a lot of questions, but I'll hold them for the workshop, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, uh, to agree to a workshop. Once they work the dates out, it'll become a, a hearing, it'll be open to the public, there'll be an agenda and the public will be notified. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we'll rely on staff to notify the council and the general public when that is to occur, thank you.
Mayor Protem Cox, just a point of clarification on item D one. Um, there's a requirement now that when the vote's not unanimous, that the record reflect who voted which way, so we just want the record to reflect that Councilmember Gomez was the no vote on D one.
I'm, yeah, I thought that was picked up, I thought that was clear, but thank you for the clarification. The next item is the Old Town Draft, a specific plan, land use plan. The, the recommendation here is to take comments from those that are involved or affected by. And after the hearing or after the staff presentation, uh, for the city council to offer comments and directions. There are several cards, I haven't counted them, but, oh, several, I think there's five individuals who want to speak on this item. And before I open this up for discussions, the city council has a report in front of them, but they, we don't have an Old Town specific plan. I would ask for the staff to make a preliminary, uh, explanation of this item.
Good evening, yes, uh, this was at the request of councilmember Gomez, it was unanimously approved to bring you an update on Old Town. Uh, originally her request was probably just specific plan oriented, but, uh, at the request of Sophie, we expanded it to give you everything that the city is currently doing in, and has done over the last year in Old Town. The Old Town specific plan, uh, update specifically, that has been in, we've had two workshops. Those covered the vision statement, the district boundaries, and then they moved to the land use and development standards. The third workshop is scheduled for February seventeenth at five PM. That's gonna be in the lobby of the transportation center this time, not the community center like they'll pass to. The reason is because this, this item, the next workshop's gonna talk about the circulation in Old Town. What we wanna do with the streets, the on-street parking, the landscaping, things like that. So that's what the following, the next workshop is going to be.
Okay, just for clarification, I wanna make sure those individuals who are here regarding this item, receive that clarification. When is the meeting and where?
It is February seventh at five PM in the Victor Valley Transportation Center. That's at one-six-eight-three-eight D, as in Dog Street.
Thank you, proceed, please.
And then, uh, from there, following the workshop, then we'll be able to finish completing the draft revision to the specific plan. And we'll also have to do some environmental documents to go along with that. And with that, we expect the plan will go through then the planning commission and city council public hearings in about six to eight months.
Thank you. Now, this is not the hearing to amend the plan, this is an update that was requested by a council member. And of course, individuals want to speak on this. And then, uh, are there any technical questions from the council regarding this item before I open this up for the public to comment? No questions of the staff, my first card is Cliff Nagy. I'm sorry, wait a minute, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Microphone, please, sorry.
Who's Chris Nagy? Mr. Nagy is the individual I called on, and if you'll please wait, we'll get right to you.
Christine Quick.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Nagy, please.
Uh, Mayor Garcia and Jim Protem and council members. I, uh, my story begins about four years ago, having grown up here and returning to Victorville as a teacher, I began to notice that, uh, the way children learn is really needed to be supported by hands-on education. And so I desired to build a children's museum, and I wanted to build it at my old junior high school, Victor Valley Junior High, now, now known as University Prep Campus. And seeing the demise of Old Town, which I grew up in and had a great, still do have a great affection for. I desired to put things together in such a way that we need to revive Old Town Victorville. And preserve what we have of Route sixty-six. We are one of those rare towns in Southern California that have a great amount of latitude as far as road, that actually represents Route sixty-six. Other towns are simply torn down, replaced it with strip malls and, and other things. I believe Old Town is the heart of Victorville. That's the place where I grew up and there was culture and people knew each other and things went on and families got together and everybody knew who each other was. And I just want to say that ICR sixty-six, Imagine Center Route sixty-six, was part of the, the initiation of the former University Prep Campus. As far as putting that together, we would love to have that gym for multipurpose building, for children's museum and other purposes downtown. We exist to help the nonprofits come together and speak as one voice and the encouraged businesses down there. We're supported by over twenty-five businesses in our vision and our plan. I just, basically, I'm here today to introduce myself once again, because it's been about three years since I was here last, telling you about the children's museum. So with that, I just wanted to encourage Old Town Victorville and the plans that are already in, in effect there and seeing the, the city's already designated that school as an anchor. We just wanna see it go forth and see our town return, thank you very much.
Cliff, thank you. Um, before I call on the next card, there was a lady who wanted to speak, does somebody instruct her that she needs to fill out a card? Clerk, please. Not if she has, if she needs to fill out a card. And while we're waiting, Julia Turner, next speaker. I'm sorry? Courier. I can't read, sorry. Sorry?
No worries, hi. Um, I'm a passionate and very, very proud resident of the High Desert, and I just wanted to say that to me and a lot of my friends who are here today, it's really important to us to see downtown be revived. We think that it's something that is really unique and special to our heritage and history of the High Desert, and it would be a really, a big shame to see it go. Um, I guess, really what I'm here today is, is to urge you guys to take that into consideration when you make your plans for downtown. A lot of us are really very passionate about seeing it turn out to flourish in a way that a community can really grow and expand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tina Baru?
Hi, Mayor and council members, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of ICR Children's Museum Route sixty-six. My name is Tina and I am a board member. As you've heard two other representatives speak for, on behalf of the children's museum, we are very passionate, we share that same mission to see our community thrive. We really are passionate to help our children, um, in the local community, a lot of them, you've heard the stories, the demographics of low income. We, we desire to provide a safe place for children after-school activities. A lot of, uh, the board members are educators and they're willing to give their time, I'm willing to give my time, um, my, just sacrifice, sacrifice our time, our talents to our children. And with, um, giving them, um, meaningful educational hands-on experience, we can, uh, do like some kids learn kinesthetically, visually. So we wanna provide those, um, avenues for the children to grow. And in turn, our vision is to see our community thrive, we're gonna, we would love to see, uh, business owners come up here and, um, just see our Old Town come back to life. And then also to bring, we would love to bring public events to our community and offer outreach events to our community as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Richard Mathias.
Gentlemen, Sophie, very happy to see you up there, you're an awesome person. Um, here's my thing, my thing, I've read the specific plan for downtown Victorville. I think it's very limited, I don't think, uh, I think we're putting our youth in a pox. I don't, I think that, how are we gonna dictate, what are we gonna open up and limit all, what we can open up? I think, I've been trying to open up my bar for a year, I'm the third owner of this property, one-five-five-five-five-seventh street. It was the only bar in downtown Victorville, might've had a little bump in the road, but it was opened by the very first Victor Press, the very first owner opened Earl's Mood. It's been a bar that whole time, I've got a few mails from Victor staff saying it's too close to residential. I've gotten more violations in the last year than the last forty years of the last owner, he was just at my place last month. I'm just saying, it's not easy to open up businesses in downtown Victorville. We should be supporting, giving out grants, helping people open up businesses, even if they're gonna fail, even if there is a few more businesses. I, I think it, there should be freedom of, of competing and failing, but not being dictated. I don't want my kids not to have the option of opening up what they want to dream about. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, just for information, this is to take testimony, but there's going to be a lot of hearings in regard to this item, so no decisions are being made here tonight. But we do take all the testimony, it becomes a part of the record, so thank you. And Christina Quick, and my apologies, I did have a card here, but I didn't get your name, so it is your turn. And it was the last. And it was the last card in both cases. So if you'll step up to the microphone, please, Ms. Quick.
Hello, Christine Quick. Thank you. I was coming home late the other night and I noticed there is not a lot of lighting down on 7th Street at all. And Barstow, as a contrast, has a whole lot of lights down Main Street. And we need, you know, at least something equitable here in Victorville.
Can you bring that microphone in a little closer to you, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
We need more lights in, on 7th Street. We don't have enough. As a contrast, Barstow, Main Street has a lot more lights. They're kind of lit up like a Christmas tree. But you know, one way I think will do great improvement towards Old Town Victorville and 7th Street will be to have more streetlights. And thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one more card. I missed that. My apologies. Rachel Kanaki? Kanakoli?
Kanakooli.
Kanakoli.
We'll get, don't worry.
Clean the two of us, we got it right.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. So the last time I was up here actually was probably over a year ago and I was speaking for a campaign I was working on to actually turn the Route 66 into a national monument, the Mojave National, to protect like this whole heritage and everything that the city has. And I can say, just like with my friends that are speaking, we think that there's a really big, big potential and opportunity for downtown. Me being a young person, I'm only 23, you know, like we have dreams to like have housing that's, you know, affordable for us, have photo studios, music, like music shops, you know, all kinds of things that bring business and a culture to the city, not just money, but actually provide something that we can have to hold on to. And I think with Route 66, there's like a combination of building on the history that the city has. Obviously, Route 66 is one of the main things that brings people to the desert. Even working in the mall, I have people come in my store and I'm like, oh, why are you here? Because they're on Route 66. You know what I mean? Like speaking different languages and different countries. And then being living from San Bernardino, I can see too what Route 66 brought there as well. So I think it's important that we build on that. And it seems like we have a lot of organizations and grants and things like that that will help build like, you know, restore the, how the buildings look and things like that to kind of keep that old Victorville look. But we think at the same time, like what Richard was saying, business-wise, with all the like red tape and bureaucracy and stuff, maybe not the right kind of businesses are being opened. So if we could have like a bigger conversation in terms of like who's involved, like young people, old people, students, nonprofits, organizations, music. I think there's a big, you know, we have a theater down there. We have all kinds of things that if everyone would just come together in a way and see the bigger picture of like a big thriving downtown with people walking around and seeing their friends or going to movies, going to a show, going to a bar, walking home, something like that. I think that's what the city needs. That's what we need, like a, a community hub, you know, like the mall and Restaurant Row. That's not a community hub. That makes money, that brings tourists, that brings revenue, but that doesn't bring like a culture, doesn't give us anything to do besides go eat and go shop, you know? Which is cool, we need that. We need that kind of, you know, we have people coming through Vegas and stuff. We need that one stop. But I think for the people that live here, that have lived here their whole lives, I think something like Old Town is what they need. But we have to have a balance between like, you know, the people that want the penny candy stores and the people that want concerts and bars and music halls. I think there has to be a balance. And there can be, you know? But there's like a lot of us here that are really willing to do it. Timer hasn't gone off yet. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I don't have any more cards at this time, but I want to point out that that Councilmember Gomez asked for an update. We have a two-page report in the staff. I don't know how many people that are from downtown have seen this. I want to ask staff, make sure that we reproduce it, make sure that the road organization gets this and any other business people who want it. It is, there's a lot of good information provided. And I think it will help for the upcoming Planning Commission meeting for those individuals who want to know what has been going on and then for your input into that process when they have the meeting. There'll be a lot more discussions before any action can actually be taken. Planning Commission will be looking at this, making recommendations. If there are recommendations to update or change, City Council will be involved with public hearings. So you'll have ample opportunity to have more input into this process. And thank you, Ms. Gomez, for asking this brought up. Thank all of you for participating in this. And I'm sure we're going to see you at further, further meetings. Are there any comments from the council at this time before we go to agenda item number four?
Yes, I do. I have a question and then probably a couple of other things to add. Has it been confirmed which staff will be in attendance for that meeting? I, it wasn't in the report. Another thing, just what happens here is very cyclical. We see a business open up and then it fails. It gets boarded up and transients may move in and destroy property. And then the buildings are burnt. What are we doing with our residents who don't have a place at night? In just one month alone, we have seen multiple fires. Fires on 7th and B, fires on 7th and C. Multiple fires on the same buildings such as the Trilogy Theater along with the abandoned restaurant next to it. Buildings are being boarded up and again broken into. Last week, the Old Leo's 98th Cent Store located at 15578 7th Street in Victorville, along with its neighboring building located at 155877 Street in Victorville, were both unlocked and missing locks where there was no security to prevent people from moving in and the story has no ending. This is great to have this great update. And we know we need to discuss the possibilities of having, which we did. We have a few discussions where we were going to try to see if we could put in Plexiglas instead of just boarding it up and making it look like it's not livable or nobody can go inside. Because when we put Plexiglas, it's much stronger, I was told. And it makes for a window to be transparent. So if anyone is outside, we can see if anyone is inside and start to protect those buildings. That was all I needed to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, but no comments from the council members? We're going to move on. No comments. Item four. This is for Resolution 18-001, Authorization to Submit an Application for the Cal Recycle Grant. The Waste Tire Enforcement Grant Application. Before we adopt Resolution Number 18-001. Are there any questions of staff? No questions of staff? I have a motion, please.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Before we vote, are there any comments from the council? Hearing no comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, there are no no's, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. We move on to item number five.
May I put in a call? It should reflect that, that Councilmember Negrete was absent during that vote. It was a 4-0 vote.
Was?
Absent from the vote.
Oh, I didn't see him. What, what, wait a minute.
He stepped out for a moment.
Record when he left the meeting.
He just stepped out, he just stepped out for a moment.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item five. This is submitted by our interim City Manager, Mr. Keith Metzler and George Harris, our Deputy City Manager. And this is a discussion and possible action regarding fire service. Before I open this up, are there any technical questions from the council members to the staff? There are no questions in regard to the proposed submitted from the council?
Yeah, I do have a lot of questions. Since you're asking for questions, not necessarily comments, I do have questions.
Comments would follow after a motion in a second, but if you have questions, now would be the appropriate time to ask them.
So we are on item D5. Okay. So I don't know if there was going to be a presentation. I'm assuming there's not because no one's up here going to give a presentation. So I have a couple of questions. I don't know if Chief Hartley is going to be up here speaking. I had a question for him, but if he's not here, I have questions for staff up here. So my question for the staff is how are we saving money from our current services from the proposed fire contracts and the current fire contract? In other words, what is the amount of money saving between the proposed and the current? Will the city fund the buying of new fire engines? And how does that save us, the city, money over the leasing options that the county fire proposed? Next, when will the 640, when will this, when will the monies come from? There's an amount of money here that I'm seeing that I wasn't sure how we're just going to come up with it. I know Measure K didn't pass, so I was wanting to know where that money's coming from. Is this recruitment process that we're going through at the moment? Is that what we're doing? Because I see a resolution, a potential movement, a move, a second, and then immediately a fire service department gets opened up within the majority of, of the council. So I want to make sure, is that what we're doing? And another thing, who in the city will be assuming these roles? Why was the decision made to establish a five-year projected budget rather than say maybe a 10 or maybe a different figure? And then finally, on the report, I saw a 14% higher analysis. And they're talking about figures and dollars. So on page three, just briefly, it says, "In comparison, the proposed cost of the city-operated fire department came in 14% higher than the analysis performed by City Gate." In the city fire versus the county fire, it says that the approximation of 14% annual over the cost of the contracting was going to be an additional savings on the sixth year. To me, those presented challenging views. And so I wanted clarification on that as well.
Madam Mayor.
Before you begin, staff, these are a series of questions. And I would hope that if there are any other questions from the council, you could include them as a part of the staff presentation. Any other questions from the council members in regard to the, to this memorandum?
So is, was Chief Hartley here?
Well, we'll get to that because this is a matter now before we open it up for the cards. I'm sure if he's here or someone's going to speak on his behalf. But at the present time, the staff will make a presentation to the council and cover those questions that our council member has asked. You would proceed, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item is brought to you as a discussion and possible action regarding fire services for the city of Victorville. And is a subject that this council and staff have been reviewing in pretty exhaustive detail for the last 12 months, including six meetings that had workshop components to them. And over that period of time, those discussions involved type of service, funding, type of issues. Types of service that it compared was city fire versus current contract services provided by county fire. It even went so far as to look at Cal Fire as an option. And at the same time, it also looked at funding resources such as pursuing annexation into an FP5 fire district. And also eventually discussed and pursued special tax, which narrowly got defeated. I think it garnered about 62%, which was intended to help solve some of the funding issues that just altogether deal with the provision of fire services. So over that course of time, one of the monumental points in time was back in June when we reviewed the completed City Gate study where it did compare four different cost models involving those that I just discussed, the Cal Fire, FP5, county fire contract and city fire. And interestingly, as a part of that City Gate study, it did in fact identify from a cost perspective, going to and transitioning to city fire would be the most cost-effective over a period of time. We had chosen at the time to take a wait and see and pursue the, the tax measure. That failed and then subsequently in late November, and which is why we're here tonight, staff was directed to do two things. Pursue a best and final offer from county fire, which is important for us since we've given notice, our one-year notice to terminate the contract or end the contract effective July 5th of this year. The second option was for city to go ahead and initiate and pursue the startup of its own city fire department. So having followed that direction over the last 30 days, we retained a very experienced, recognizable retired fire chief, Mr. Matt Freitas, previous, most previous stint was with the city of Rialto. We actually brought him on board to actually study the cost-effective nature of providing fire services. And in doing so, there was a very exhaustive, extensive study that looked at everything from compensation. There was actually a county-wide compensation study done to compare what fire costs were on a, on a man basis. There was capital equipment assessments being done to determine what was the condition of your fire apparatus and equipment. There was also facility assessments as to the stations, what the facility requires going forward. And with that, it concluded with a very summarized version of what's in your staff report today, which is a forecast, a cost model forecast identifying the proposed cost of services, including both the one-time startup costs along with those costs to run and upgrade your apparatus over the five and 10-year period. So that is what's contained in the staff write-up is a summarized version of all that. There's a lot more detail that Mr. Freitas and Mr. Harris can answer specific questions to. But I think altogether, what you're going to find in the report, which actually validates the cost findings in the City Gate report, is that on an annual basis over the first five-year plan, there's about a 5.2% savings with a positive net present value of about $3.8 million. And that's while funding the necessary upgrades to, to the, to the equipment within that first five years. That equipment totaling about $4.8 million of vehicle replacements. After the 10, I'm sorry, after year six then, savings are actually expected, projected to increase greater than that 5% as some of the capital that has been purchased is newer and requires less maintenance. So with that, staff has presented this item for your consideration. Staff believes that with the work done over the last 30 days, validates previous work done by City Gate, identifying that going to a city-run fire department is the most cost-effective over time. And therefore, staff's recommendation is that it go ahead and approve. In this particular case, the, we would approve only the job description for the fire chief and that staff be directed to begin steps to implement a city-run fire department.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, you assisted. Mr. Metzler, you have anything to add at this point in time?
I would just like to add that is, it was, the results were glaring and pretty consistent with the findings of the City Gate report. With a bit of exceptions, what the City Gate report didn't do for you is actually put an implementation plan together, which is, was part of the scope of the consultant, Mr. Freitas. And so if you see a lot of variances or some minor variances between the City Gate report and what's presented to you tonight, as Mr. Freitas's findings, is that we actually put together an implementation plan which incorporates cost of county fire for a period of six months to help out with the transition, beginning in January, I'm sorry, in July and ending in December of 2018. That was not a component considered in the City Gate report as well as we did a better of analysis as, as described by the city manager as to the actual salaries that are going to be made. I think some of the assumptions that were made in the City Gate report assumed that the city would utilize salary structures based out of the city, the town of Apple Valley. And I, and what the consultant and I are recommending is that we use a bit more aggressive salary schedule to make sure that we're able to attract those, those, the staff to actually staff the department. So that's the, pretty much the basis of the, of the variance between the City Gate report and what you have in front of you today. But the details of those variances are actually listed in your staff report.
Just to clarify what you said, if we have to go as late as December, we can continue the county contract through December?
We believe that there's, yeah, we believe that there's language in the current contract that, that allows for a holdover. Those costs would be, as written in the staff, or in that agreement, would be provided, the, the actual hourly rates are assumed that may, may be amended for that period of time. But there is a provision in the current contract to allow for holdover, to allow us to transition appropriately.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Metzler or Mr. Harris? This is not a public hearing, however. We want to make sure that all of the stakeholders have an input. And we do have, I do have four cards. I'm going to ask those individuals to make the presentation then to the City Council. First card is Mr. Gary McBride.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. I'm Gary McBride, the CEO for the county of San Bernardino. Mr. Hartwig is here, Chief Hartwig is here this evening, so he will be speaking as well, and he's going to get into a little more detail. But I will just point out that county staff, including me, have had a number of discussions with city staff recently about this potential action and the potential for an extension of the county contract, and I appreciate that. I do believe there are still some very substantial issues that are worthy to continue discussion, and I think that it would be valuable to continue those conversations before the city council takes action. So, my request tonight is pretty straightforward, that the city council not act on this item, and allow those conversations to continue between staff. And I'm also happy to meet with any city council members that might be interested in discussions as well. And certainly, we're going to have county fire staff here to provide some comments and questions, and I'm happy to answer questions as well. So I thank you for your consideration of the matter.
Thank you. The next card that I have is Dan Mahia.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to just speak about the last nine and a half years we've been providing service here in Victorville. And in that nine and a half years, we recognized that Victorville is the second-largest city in the county as far as response calls, only to San Bernardino City. And in that time, we've seen an increase from 12,000 incidents to approximately 20,000, with no real increase in staffing. We've seen an increase in the budget of approximately 5% to 6% over that time, and it started out about 11.5 to presently at $13 million with an increased staffing to meet some of your call loads. We've also seen a large number of incidents in Victorville, where we've exceeded the number of, or exceeded the ability for Victorville to manage the call on their own, and they had to rely on county fire to step in, not only to help manage the incident, but also to provide coverage for your stations while we're managing those incidents. An example would be is in the river bottom. In the river bottom, it not only takes the initial attack, but it also takes follow-up. And that's where our hand crews and dozers have come in and been able to now provide that additional staffing, and be able to allow our fire engines to get back into service and get back to the stations. Also, we had, like, not, last year, we had a swift water incident, where we had a lot of rain come through the city. We had multiple swift water incidents going on simultaneously. We brought up equipment from the valley, we staffed them up here to meet the call loads, and that's just some examples of what goes on. You see the structured fires that happen. It takes approximately four pieces of equipment to run a structured fire in Victorville. That leaves one piece of equipment to cover your stations, so we have to move equipment in. County fire doesn't have to ask anybody for mutual aid or auto aid. We do is automatically be able to move those pieces of equipment in and staff your city. Those are some of the examples that we have of managing those call loads and incidents in Victorville. Some of the accomplishments we've had while providing service to Victorville in the last nine and a half years is we brought in the paramedic service. You were BLS previously. I know there was a strong push to go ALS. We brought in a program, turnkey people, a training program, as well as a recruitment program. And in that time, we've also brought in computer systems for your fire engines. Presently, they're able to look at a computer in their fire engine and see updated information, where other units are, locations of fire hydrants. We also went from paper-form reports to paperless, electronic reporting systems. We brought all those forward. Also, we recognized your need for frontline equipment. We went out and found a piece of equipment for you. It was yours. We recognized it, we went out and painted it, matched your colors, put an intercom system in it so that we had hearing protection, as well as upgraded communications inside the cab. Also, our partnership with you in recognizing your call load and the need for increased staffing. We partnered with you on our squad at TruStation 311, and with that, we provided the unit itself as well as the paramedic, and Victorville was responsible for the firefighter. Some of the other things that we also did is we continued to participate in your community needs, your parade, your national night out, your fall festivals, and meeting the community's needs as far as that and representing you. Some of the additional benefits that you have is the depth of personnel that we have with county fire. We don't have just one or two people that are subject matters in a specialized training. We have several. And it entails programs such as hazmat. It has programs like specialized truck training that we provide. We also modern-day fire behavior. Also, we have a rescue unit that also can provide rescue. We had a rescue here in Victorville where we had somebody trapped down in a shaft, and we were able to bring our equipment up and mitigate that for you. As well as just for additional information, our regional task force presently is assigned to the Montecito floods and is participating in search and rescue there. Some of the other benefits is our training division. Like I said, we have people that are trained, a cadre of people that help us in active shooter. Like I said, modern-day fire behavior, things that meet the needs of the community, and we can respond to those quickly. Also, we have mechanics and investigators at 24 hours, seven days a week, and we don't just have one. If we get one tied up, we have multiple people that are in line. So that's some of the depth that we offer. We talked about our hand crews and dozers, and the benefit of those that it provides the city. Also, I'd like to just say in closing, you know, we provided service to Victorville with honor, always participating in the community needs as well as respecting your local control. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mark Harwick.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. My name is Mark Harwick. I'm the fire chief and fire warden of the San Bernardino County Fire District. I am here to make some comments on the staff report. I think it's important to note that I had the first opportunity to read the report and the information included within the report when it was released to the public this last week. Mr. McBride mentioned that we had some conversations, some with us and the city, the fire district, and then at least one conversation with the fire district, the CEO, and the city staff. And in fact, the last meeting we had was just before Christmas, and we had a list of things that we were going to work on, essentially information that I was going to provide city staff in regards to options as we moved forward, and we understood that the city was interested in looking at options. We've known that for a number of years. One of them was a five-year financial forecast. There was some question as to what that forecast would be, whether it would be a five-year or 10-years forecast. And specifically, we discussed, the county staff discussed the likelihood of the county costs reducing over a five- or 10-year period because of the pension obligation bond and the performance of the SB SARA, or the county retirement system. We did commit to going back and formalizing that more closely for city staff, and we're working on that when this report came out. We wanted to know what those contract costs were. For instance, as the sheet indicates that you have in your packet, where our costs are listed, the obligation is listed at $13.9 million a year. That includes a lease option. That was simply an option for the city. That is not a requirement of the city. The requirement of the city is about $13.5 million, and that's listed in the report. The lease option was an option that you, the city had an option to do if you chose not to go out and lease your own or to buy your own. That was a lease through the county. The other question was, was there some potential unfunded liability? I think the county, as we looked at the unfunded liability that would be transferred to the county safety pool if the city were to leave or terminate the contract, that that could have a potential impact on other county contracts within, safety contracts within the county. We also, at that meeting, talked about the impact of moving personnel. There seems to be, and we certainly understand it, that the county fire district, there seems to be an interest to open 315.
Normally, we have three minutes, because this is such an important issue affecting everyone, we're going to give you a little extension of time if you can wrap it up, but go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. There was an interest in opening the 315, so we talked about looking more closely at the impact to move the equipment and staff from 314 to 315, open that up, and then serve the 314 area with Station 22 out of the Spring Valley Lake area in the county. Also, there were some questions about transition process and timelines, and we committed to getting that information back to the city manager as well. The other thing I would mention related to the report, there was a lot of talk about auto aid, mutual aid, expectations from the county fire district. I think the best way to state that is currently, the city of Victorville is part of a regional fire protection delivery system with county fire, and you enjoy the benefits of that, very similar to what Chief Mahia mentioned. If you're not part of that regional delivery model, there would likely be some impact of the delivery service and what the county would be able to commit to the city apart from that service model. Let me just wrap it up if I could, Mr. Mayor Protem. We've had a partnership with the city for 10 years, and we've valued that partnership. In fact, our assistant chief has acted as a member of your city staff and has been available for anything that you might have needed or wanted related to information, and even controlling costs and improving services. And I believe we've met that request. The limited analysis that we've performed on the costs associated with it really boiled down to an improvement in your costs, essentially lessening your costs, but that's as a result of the transferring of that unfunded retirement liability that's been accrued by firefighters and support staff on behalf of the city of Victorville and the citizens here that we serve. Our initial analysis indicates that the liability is roughly $33 million, and that would be transferred to the county and the contracts that the county maintains with other cities and districts within the county. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Chief, thank you for your comments. Thank you. Travis Agari.
I just wanted to actually talk on one thing in the staff report. Excuse me. Under the section where it talks about Victorville calls for service, it talks about potentially having an EMD dispatching system in place where you would, in essence, rely on AMR to run calls solo. One of the things that worries me, as a captain up here, and also somebody that served not only with Victorville but now with county up here in the high desert, is the delayed response times. And those of you that have taken advantage of doing the write-outs with us, you've seen the delayed response times, sometimes 10 minutes, 20 minutes, and I've even waited up to 45 in an hour on scene without an AMR unit. Now, if you're going to be saying that it's okay for AMR to run calls solo in your city, you could potentially be leaving your citizens at a whim for up to an hour. So it's one of the things that I would like to at least hear you clarify, since that's something that was stated within your report. As many of us know, the dynamics of a call can change drastically as the call progresses. And if there is a delay in care, it would be unfortunate that it was done at the decision of your hand. And so I would just like to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Madam Clerk, do you have any further cards in regard to this particular subject?
No.
No additional cards?
No additional.
We have completed the audience input. We actually started with Councilmember Gomez in regard to comments and said she had questions, said she had comments. I'm going to start on my left. Comments now from the city council members.
Yes, a couple of things were raised, and now my concerns are as follows. If we have the advantage of the county fire having hazmat, truck training, moderate fire behaviors to moderate the fires, rescue equipment, search and rescue, training divisions for such things as active shooters, mechanics and investigators, not just one but multiple as a backup, and tools and dozers, has the city considered maybe leasing, or do we have our own? What will we do? Is that a part of the implementation plan? And also, what are the potential impacts that a $33 million transfer to the county will cause to the city of Victorville? Was that a part of the City Gate study? Did we consider that impact? And lastly, would staff be able to address those delays that potentially can bring a lot of the constituents to many complaints if that is the case? What we could possibly face, and how will we be addressing those?
Staff, we have comments from the council. We're going to have comments from all the council, and then you can respond to the whole council. Questions initially asked before we're answered, now the comments. Thank you, councilmen, for your comments. We continue. Madam Mayor, do you have any questions or comments? No questions? Mr. Kennedy, you have any comments?
I would like, I'd like to get some amplification, if we could, on this use of EMD, the sort of prioritizing of calls, and how we might not have to roll a complete fire unit, engine company, with all the lights on medical calls that are not life-threatening in that particular...
And staff, while you're writing that down, preparing to answer, Mr. DeGrady.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. First of all, I'd like to say that I, when I read the staff report, I really appreciate the timeline. And I, again, would caution staff in the future, what we really need are the universe of possibilities from the very beginning. When you have iterative costs and conversations that transpire over a year, it's very difficult to make a decision. And early on, we had discussed FP5, and there were some real benefits to that. Then we went further and considered other alternatives, and of course, the election didn't work out for us. But this is a cost issue, and what we need as a council, and I don't mean to speak on behalf of the council, but as one of the council members, is the information in a timely manner and complete. And I understand things sometimes don't lend itself to having all the analysis done upfront. But having FP5 analyzed at first as the potential solution to this problem without considering fully the other alternatives, I was disappointed by that, because there are, there's some positives and pros and cons for all of these alternatives. But this is not an ideal situation, and 10 years ago, it was deemed an ideal situation. So, what we've talked about and what's been alluded to a little bit tonight, and again, this is very disappointing. If you're going to do your own fire department, there are capital improvement, capital investment costs that are significant, and that's okay. They just have to be planned for. But ignoring them is not going to work. I think our oldest fire truck is from the 80s. And I say that because no matter what happens, the costs are fine as long as we know about them and we can plan for them. There was a consultant one time that came up here in the council when I was pretty new, and said, "Costs go up. That's just a matter of fact." And that was very disappointing, because what we're here to do is try to make the best decisions that we can on behalf of the city and provide the most services that we can with the money and the revenues that we have, without raising taxes. But we're in a difficult situation, because nobody talks about how we are overwhelmed when it comes to public safety. And that's a real cost that... And that's a real cost that nobody wants to vote a tax on themselves. Fine, I understand that. But what happens is that then people are left with limited services, and nobody wants that. So all that to say is that, I'm not saying any one particular person, I'm just saying it is very hard to make a decision over a year period when you have one alternative to consider a year ago. And then towards the end of the year when the election didn't work out, I was really hoping to have some idea of where, as a partner, the county and the city could continue their relationship. So I understand, again, not time seems to have been working against us here, but it's just really unfortunate because we do have quite a bit of costs when it comes to the fire department and police and all that. But the days of being a small town are over. And that growth that you see, that's not going to stop.
Councilman Negretti, you have 30 seconds.
So anyway, I just want to say that it's been a pleasure working with the county folks, and certainly, this is not a personal decision, and it's just really unfortunate, the position we're in here today because of rising costs and things.
Thank you, Mr. Negretti. Staff, you've heard the comments from the council. There've been several questions and comments and additional information. We're making changes to the report, and you want to try to answer the questions that have been presented to you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, Madam Mayor, and members of the councils, I'll try to answer some of the questions raised, but certainly, I'm going to defer, as it relates to the EMD/AMR, to Mr. Freitas, as he's certainly much more qualified. On the EMD/AMR-related matters, I'm going to defer to Matt, and we'll call him up here in just a minute, Mr. Freitas, I should say. But I think it's important to note, and it's been alluded to already, that over the course of the last year, not once have I heard it being an issue over the quality of service. I think we're absolutely committed in an agreement that the fire service provided by County Fire has been by far of the highest of quality. The issue that we've been really grappling with over the last year is money. It's dollars and cents. Councilmember Negretti is right that there are merits to each of the different options. Certainly, as I would speak to FP5, and when we studied it a year ago before we were directed in a different direction, FP5 had advantages from the perspective that it freed up general fund revenue to the city. There were disadvantages recognized by this council. Certainly, one involved control, but another major issue certainly involved costs, and costs from the perspective of the overall cost of service to the taxpayer. Certainly, as we look at the option of city fire, we believe we're answering the cost question as being the most cost-effective service, but it does not bring that supplemental form of revenue that we've been looking for to help solve the larger equation of needing funds to keep up with the pace of service, cost of service for fire, and not just fire. We're going to be dealing with the same issue for police as well. The cost for public safety is continuing to escalate, and the revenues generated to offset that just are not keeping pace. It's just a fundamental issue. So absolutely, there's benefits one way or the other, but over the course of the year, we've exhausted a number of those efforts to decide what's best for the city, and that's kind of what got us to where we're at today. Speaking to the questions about equipment, there's an extensive amount of equipment that we do own for the purpose of being as conservative as possible. The study that we've, and the plan that we've put together, involved purchase of equipment, and that's actually factored in. We certainly believe if leasing is an option worth considering, we can plug that in, and there might be some near-term dollars saved over a period of time. But to be conservative, we actually just contemplated altogether the purchase of equipment. I think that might generally address some of the comments and questions. As to the EMD/AMR, amplify that conversation, which I think is what Kennedy was asking for. I'd ask for Mr. Matt Freitas to come up and address that for us.
Mr. Freitas? When you introduce yourself, will you give a little bit of background on who you are and why you're addressing the council? Thank you.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council. My name is Matt Freitas, and I have worked with your staff for the last six weeks in doing research to basically put together a roadmap that was asked for by council in late November on what it would look like to get into a city fire department, which included determining a timeline, determining the costs, and determining the level of service that you would be able to put together. I will try to answer as many of the questions as I can, and if I'm missing any, please feel free to ask me to expand on those. The first one had to do with the Emergency Medical Dispatch Program, which is not in itself a brand-new program. It's been around for about 35 years. It's used throughout the United States and in 34 other countries, so it is very well-validated and very broadly-used. The premise behind a component of it that we call priority dispatching, which is built on the idea that not every call that goes in through a 911 communication center is actually a true medical emergency. Yet traditionally, in the fire service, we have had a one-size-fits-all. We send all of our resources, code three paramedics, the highest level that we have in some areas, to every single call for service. And what we have found is that particularly in cities like Victorville, which was correctly stated by Chief Mahia, that you have, I would say, not just nearly the highest call volume per capita, you have the highest call volume in the county. And so the recommendation of the staff report is to take a two-pronged approach to that. One of them is that eventually, and soon, you will need to add some resources to address this problem. But the other prong is that you need to take control of the call volume that you have. So what EMD, the priority dispatching, allows you to do is the dispatch center, which is already accredited and doing this right now, will ask the patient, or I should say, the caller, a series of questions, and through that question, in a very short period of time, they can put it on a priority of basically six different levels. The lowest priority are those that are not medically emergent, and the lowest of which likely do not need an ambulance response at all. So it's up to the individual jurisdiction, but usually, the lower priority calls, many of them don't need lights and sirens, some of them do not need ALS intervention. But in all cases, we always send something that is based, it's to fit the need that they have. Often, we get tied up with, you know, we're going to be sending too few resources to a low-acuity call. The other side of the equation, and I think is as or even more important, is that when you're sending your most valuable paramedics to a low-acuity call, and by that, we mean people that they've got the cold, they've got the flu, they smashed their finger, you've taken that unit out of service to serve somebody who really does not have a medically acute problem, and then the next call comes in five minutes later for somebody who's having a heart attack, and we don't have a unit to send. So it's really more, it's not just about reducing your call volume, it's making sure that you have the right resources for the right call at each time. I've had experience with this program in both the cities of San Bernardino and the city of Rialto. The city of Rialto has their own ambulances, so it has a little bit different dynamic. City of San Bernardino is very similar, and as they mentioned, very high call volume, was done there for the same reason. And we partnered with AMR, and in those cases, for those low-acuity calls, we did not send a fire resource. We reserved them for the high-acuity calls, and AMR responded solo. We did a great deal of research, some of which is available online, but what we found is that through using that program, we increased resource availability by 10.2%, and we reduced response times by 32% to the highest acuity calls, which equates to better patient outcomes. As far as the statements that AMR would take longer, or could perhaps, it would almost sound as though it would be abandoned, we have people here this evening from AMR that would be better qualified to speak to that. If that pleases the council, they could address that piece of it.
What about the more serious calls where you might need EMT but don't need a fire truck? How do we deal with that?
Well, there's a number of-
You told that it's state law that we have to have both.
That you have to have, I'm sorry, both EMTs-
Always have to roll a fire truck with the EMT.
Well, if you're going to roll it for an EMS call, then you would have to have medically-trained personnel on there. As far as, this is the point, that we always send somebody, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it always has to be a fire engine with paramedics code three every time. There are a number of calls that are occurring in your city that could be handled by a paramedic ambulance by themselves, even with a no-code response. They're that low of acuity in their medical characteristics.
Depends on the-
Correct. And every city will decide, because every city has different kinds of resources. In Rialto, we had ambulances. Some use squads, some use a lot of squads, some don't use any squads. What you decide to send is really tailored to what works for your community. But at the end of the day, what we recommended here to try to take control of your call volume and make sure you're sending the limited resources you have to the right call, is to use that system that's in place and start working with AMR and start seeing if there's another way that we can approach those.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Well, at this time, councilmembers, you have a recommendation from the staff. We've had questions, and we've had, I've refrained, I've left my comments for now. I believe that every trip starts with the first step. Every venture starts with the first step, and the longer that we delay, the longer that it's going to take this city to accomplish almost anything. On the other hand, it is clear that very serious questions have been raised and comments have been made that deserve answers. And I don't believe that we help the citizens or ourselves by delaying this action until we get the answers to everything, because that is essentially saying we will never answer the question. We have to, we have no choice, we have a contract that's ending. I'm going to recommend that you follow the staff's recommendation, but I would also recommend, with an understanding or a second item from the council, that we, in fact, continue discussion with the appropriate county officials in regard to a potential contract, because no matter what happens, we still must have a relationship with County Fire, whether we contract, whether we join the special district, or whether we form our own fire department. It can't function without a relationship and an agreement with the fire departments around us, including County Fire. Simply because the city council would take an action to authorize staff to proceed as recommended does not mean that that decision is final tonight. We may uncover things within a short period of time that totally changes our mind or causes us to go in a different direction. I have been told recently that the county has refined their figures and want to be able to present those to staff, and that, in fact, those figures may change the mind of the recommendation of the staff. On the other hand, if you delay a decision, and in two or three weeks, we have a meeting, and in two or three weeks, find out that it didn't change anything, we've simply, again, delayed the process. We started this process a year ago to ensure that the city receives the best possible firefighting services for the health, safety, and welfare. I urge the council to move ahead, but I also urge the council to keep an open mind and authorize staff, and our members of the council, if requested by the supervisor, to meet for additional information. Obviously, such a meeting is going to require individual, not individual meetings because of the Brown Act, but on the other hand, there has been a request that one member or two of the council be involved so that assurance that county CIO, city manager, person from management, a person from the elected position, have a full exchange of information to ensure that the county has been able to transmit all the information that they have, and to ensure that the city council has received and understands all the information that they want to impart to us. So I would request a motion in a second to the council.
The motion, again, was, was that a motion, Jim?
No, I did not make the-
Well, then, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the staff recommendation to begin the implementation of the city fire department, and whatever the immediate decisions are that need to be made, and I believe that's the hiring of a fire chief.
Or the recruitment, yes.
But I also want that motion to include that we continue hearing any additional proposals that the county wants to make. But as part of those proposals from the county, I would like to have some explanation of the recent Board of Supervisor meeting where the supervisor said to County Fire, "We don't want to keep subsidizing you." I don't know what the size of that is, I don't know the full scope of that issue, but if the general fund is subsidizing County Fire, it means that County Fire can't afford to do what they're doing now, and they're going to have to generate additional revenues. If that's the case, they've only got three places to go: property taxes, FP5 taxes, and charges to cities under county contracts. So I'd like to know how this subsidy is going to be replaced, who's going to pay for it, and how that's going to ultimately impact us over the next few years. That has to be part of the county's answer or their proposal to us. I want a full explanation of that. But that's my motion.
We have a very, very long motion. I did understand it. And do we have a second?
And that motion would also include, because a lot of what you're asking for is set forth in Resolution 18005 that's on your council. So-
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, any further comments from the council members?
Yeah, I'd like to place a substitute motion, knowing that the city will have to pay the county for an additional six months for city coverage. I'd like to make a motion, which does require a second, to allow the conversations with city staff and County Fire to continue and to table the current staff's recommendation to a later date.
The substitute motion has failed for lack of a second. Call for the vote. Those in favor say aye of the original motion. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion is approved by a 4-1 vote of this council.
And the negative vote is from councilmember-
Negative vote is from councilman-
Just need that for the purposes of the Brown Act.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the council, a quick question, just so that staff understands. I think we understand the direction. The one practical issue that we're going to run into is timing. Certainly, staff is more than willing to dialogue and continue the conversation with county staff. Of course, we're preparing for budgets here in the near term, and so I guess my question is, how long do we keep this as an open-ended option to work with the county? Because we're going to be recruiting, we're starting with the recruitment for the fire chief, and at a point in time, we're going to actually have to make decisions such as hiring. And the longer it takes, or the longer we feel hamstrung in being able to do that, makes it difficult to implement the direction.
Because we asked for the best and final offer.
Right.
Apparently, we didn't get the best and final offer, so now-
I thought we did.
I guess we are going to get the best and final offer, and I think they should be able to give it to us in the next 30 days.
Oh, listen to that.
And in the meantime, I wouldn't delay anything else. That would be my thought.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've been going for two hours without a break. I know we have a lot of individuals that still want to address the council when it comes to the public sector. We are going to take a five-minute break at this time. Call the meeting back to order. Thank you all for being patient with us. After two hours, I needed the break. I hope that fit in everybody else's schedule. We are now on agenda item number six. Written communications, successor agency, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and this is a submittal by Sophie Smith, who is our interim deputy city manager, and a resolution has been submitted of the city council. City of Victorville, sitting as the government board of the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and adopting a recognized obligation payment schedule, which is called ROPS, pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34177, for the period commencing on July 1, 2018, and ending on June 30, 2019, ROPS 18-19. The recommendation- The recommendation of staff is that the Honorable Board of Directors adopt a resolution, RS, R-SA-18-001, thereby approving the annual recognized obligation payment schedule for the period commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019. Are there any questions, council, regarding the staff report? Is there no questions? Chair is open for a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There are no comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There are no noes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We move to item seven. Again, an item by Sophie Smith from Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Amendment one to standard lease agreement for Building 744, by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, SCLAA, and International Aerospace Coating, Inc., formerly Leading Edge Aviation Services, Inc. The recommendation that the honorable body approve amendment number one to standard lease agreement by and between SCLAA and the International Aerospace Coating, Inc. for Building 744. Are there any questions from the council to the staff regarding the staff report? There's no questions. Chair is open for a motion.
I make a motion. I move.
Second.
A motion and a second. No comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There are no noes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We move to item eight. I'm sorry.
It would be very helpful on the motions to, if the record reflect, who made the motion and who made the second for the people that are listening.
I'm sorry, I thought the clerk was picking that up.
She is picking that up.
Thank you very much. We'll do that and we'll announce it so the audience, in case he didn't pick it up. Thank you. That motion then was made, that passed motion was made by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Next item, item eight, written communications, and council, this is from Brian Gingler, our city engineer. Amendment two of professional services contract with Water Systems Consulting, Inc. for $35,220. The recommendation that the board approve amendment two, number two, to the professional services contract with Water Systems Consulting, Inc. in the amount of $35,220. Before, take a, is there any, are there any questions from the council of staff regarding this item? Questions? Chair is open for a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy?
Second.
Second by Madam Mayor. Any comments from the council? No comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number nine. From Mr. Brian Gingler, cost proposals, amendment three, project location map. Amendment three to professional services contract with David Evans and Associates in the amount of $16,662. The recommendation from Mr. Gingler is that the board approve amendment three to the professional services contract. Are there any questions of staff regarding the, Mr. Gingler is at the microphone. Are there any questions of Mr. Gingler from the council?
Yes, Mr. Cox, I have one. Brian, can you explain, this started out as a $147,000 contract. It's expanded significantly to 241. Can you explain what has happened? What happened? You got into it and made changes and just...
There have been some significant changes in the scope of the project. When we originally included the scope in the RFP, it was not as complex of a pump station. The building was smaller, there was less equipment. There were fewer extensions of existing water mains into the street system on Amethyst Road. And so basically, the project was, at the beginning, was not highly defined. We didn't really have a preliminary design, and as the design progressed and the operational requests increased, basically, the scope increased, including the building size, more equipment, more water lines. There were also, there was also an Edison review, and this is what caused the most recent changes, where they had additional electrical equipment changes that were not anticipated when the RFP first went out.
Did they underbid it, or did we not give them the proper scope?
The, they did not underbid it because they did not have a scope that was well enough to find in the beginning that didn't include everything that was needed for the pump station. So, I mean, if we would have gone into a two-phase approach, where we would have done a preliminary design contract first, and then we would have defined the scope and then had a second phase, you probably would not have seen these increases. But since we didn't do that, it was like a one, combined all into one project. It was not...
Not a big enough job to require all that kind of investigation problem.
We could have taken that approach, but in actuality, it was not very well-defined in the very beginning.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Are there any other questions? If not, chair is open for motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negrete, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item ten. Again, from Mr. Gingler. He's still remaining there in case there are questions. This is the Mojave Riverwalk Project Agreement. Recommendations threefold. Approve the agreement with the County of San Bernardino Public Works for construction and maintenance of a bike path along Yates Road as part of the Mojave River Project. That'll make all the bike people happy. Two, approve the agreement with the County of San Bernardino Regional Parks for construction and maintenance of a bike path within the Mojave Narrows Regional Park. And if you'll notice the map, it leaves the northerly portion of Yates Road, goes into the park, does a turnaround, and comes back to Yates Road. Number three, authorize the city attorney to make a non-substantive revision to the agreement if necessary. My question is before I ask for comments, authorize the city attorney to make an agreement if necessary. Necessitated by what? Action of the council or changes in the plans or, I don't understand.
It would be just clean-up items with the county. We've worked with county council on all of these items, and sometimes they will catch last-minute, minor changes that are non-substantive, so we want the ability to just clean up those items.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Are there any questions from the council to the staff in regard to this report?
Yes, with items D-10 and D-11. Will these be affected by the circulation elements modification since it's dealing with the non-motorized implementation with the right-of-way turns and future development?
No, this won't have any relation to that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Further questions? Any other questions? If no other questions, council, we have a, we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, Mr. Negrete, second. Mayor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 11, we've already had a question on that, but again... Okay, this is approved, this is from Mr. Gingler. Approve the agreement with Victor Valley College for the construction and maintenance of the Bear Valley Road Class One Bike Project. Approve the agreement with Southern California Edison for the construction and maintenance of the Bear Valley Road Class One Bike Path Project. Three, authorize the city attorney to make substantial changes if necessary. Questions of the staff from the council regarding this item? Are no questions? Motion, chairs open for motion.
Move approval.
I didn't get who made the motion and who seconded.
Negrete.
I'll second.
Negrete made the motion.
Second.
By the mayor. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move to item 12. Gingler, you have a busy night here. Purchase of an Altec AT41M aerial bucket truck. This for the Christmas parade? No, I'm kidding. Never. Fine. The city council approved the award and contract to Altec Industries, Inc. for the amount of $191,785 for the purchase of a 2018 aerial bucket truck. I read this for the traffic signals, the maintenance signals, the streetlights at the traffic signals, all important stuff, all necessary for the safety of the citizens. But are there any questions from the city council? Any questions in regard to this report? There are no questions. If there are no questions, we have a motion?
I move for approval.
We have Ms. Gomez making the motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Kennedy has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move to item 13. Mr. Matt Matthews is up. Request to approve amendment number five of the consultant slash professional services provider agreement with Omniss, Inc. for the pavement management program contract consisting of the inspection and collection of field data for city roads. The recommendation that the city council approve the amendment number five for an increase not to exceed a certain amount. I only have one comment before I ask for comments of the council. This has been going on for some time. Our roads have been in horrible condition. We were besieged with complaints from the public regarding the condition of roads, and we're making substantial improvement, but we have a long way to go. And I'm assuming staff is very happy, and I don't have any reason not to be in disagreement with any of this, but I think it is necessary that rather than continue year after year after year with the same consultant, that every once in a while, we stop and reconsider if maybe somebody else should have a shot at this. My only comment. Comments or questions from the council members regarding this item? Questions? Open for a motion?
For approval.
Second.
We have a motion from the mayor, second, but council member... Ms. Gomez, seconded. I thought it came from the right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 14? Did I get ahead of myself? Oh, I'm okay. Mr. Shuler, Chief of Police, thank you. Nice to see you here tonight. Always welcome. We see your presence and we're thankful you're always here. It's a copy of the Victor Valley Union High School District Memorandum of Understanding Funding of a One-Year School Resources Officer. Boy, the first thing I noticed was the cost, just to be, district is to pay 100% of the cost. Thank you, Mr. Shuler. Thank you, staff and everyone involved in this, because this is needed and this is great for everyone. Questions or comments from the council members before we have a motion? No question, no comments. Chair is open for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Gomez, Ms. Councilmember Gomez, seconded, the mayor made the motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We are now down to, turn the page, and it says appeal hearings. That is not correct.
Mayor Protemin, Cox, if I might indulge, get your indulgence for a minute. I'd like to have the city clerk just read the motion and seconder on items C1 and D1 through 6, since those were on the record for the benefit of people that may be...
Oh, okay. Yes, please, go ahead.
For item C1, motion by Kennedy, second by Negrete.
That's all of item C.
Consent C1 through C4.
I believe that we are at...
We still have D1.
I don't have it.
Mayor Protemin, Cox, she still wants to read the motion makers and seconders on D1 through D6.
D1?
D1 through D6.
Through D6.
Yeah. On D1...
I made that motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to read it?
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
This is just technical compliance with the Brown Act.
Okay, we, that's, that's what I was going so fast that I misnamed who was making the motion. The second?
Okay.
Go ahead and read them.
So D1, motion by Kennedy, second by Negrete. And then we had a note from Gomez. And then on D2, motion by Kennedy, second by Garcia. And it was a motion carried unanimously. D3, motion by Kennedy, second by Garcia. Oh. I'm sorry, D3, there was no motion. D4, there was first, or motion by Kennedy, second by Garcia, with Negrete absent. And motion, motion carried with Negrete absent.
Only absent for D3?
Yeah.
Okay.
D4 and D5?
D5. That, let's see, D4. No, D5 is the one that didn't have the motion. That was just an update on D3. D4 was, was Kennedy and Garcia with Negrete absent.
I made the motion on D5?
We're not on D4, D5 yet. That was just D4. This is becoming a mess. D5, the motion by Kennedy, seconded by Garcia. Carried with Gomez voting no.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
All right. Does that clarify the record? Have we handled all those items?
Get D6.
One more is D6. Motion carried, or motion by Kennedy, second by Garcia, unanimously carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cox, I have to ask if the two young ladies in the back are still awake. If you are, that's a good job you did.
Okay. We are on item E1, which is public comments on items of interest. And before I proceed, I want to clarify, I think there was an individual that wanted to speak earlier, but put E1, but they wanted to speak regarding the dance programs?
One lady, she has submitted a card for public comment, not realizing she needed to do it for the public hearing for this CDBG grant, the public hearing.
I'm going to, I want to clarify something. That's been closed out, but on the other hand, we take all the information, and we're sorry we missed it, and we're going to go ahead and let you address the council under E1. But it'll be related to that subject, and as usual, under this particular section here, we want individuals to give testimony. We do not debate or discuss, because had we known it was an item of public interest, we would have agendized it. Had we agendized it, other people may have shown up to discuss it. So this is a little bit different, but that item is closed, but we're still going to hear you. We want to hear from everyone. That's Rosie Sandoval, is that correct? And after Sandoval, after Ms. Sandoval, I'm going to call on several individuals. Please don't get discouraged if you demand an answer from the council and don't get it, because under the Brown Act, we're not allowed to enter into a debate, but we do listen to everything you say. And if it's important enough, you will be notified by a member of the staff, please, chief or council or someone. If it's important enough to be agendized, it will be agendized at a later time, but we will not enter into a discussion or debate. Please understand that. But we do listen and we do appreciate your comments. Ms. Sandoval, please.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. And my name is Rosie Sandoval, and I'm here tonight representing a Better Way Victor Valley Domestic Violence, and it's located at 14114 Hisparia Road in Victorville. And we have a 26-bed shelter, 90-day program. And it's on an individual basis, of course. We provide to our community free classes in life skills, peer support groups, victim impact, youth life classes. And we also provide free childcare. And I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for previous support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to now, just for the E1, which is the public comments. And again, I know individuals get really frustrated because they want an answer and we don't answer. It's not because we ignore you. We have rules that we must follow. And you have three minutes to express your needs or wishes or comments to the city council. The first card I have is Sandy Toscano. That correct, Toscano? Come on down.
I am Sandy Carlos Toscano. I'm with Victor Valley Community Warming Shelter. I have prepared a speech, not a speech, but a concern about one of your council members, and am I allowed to mention her by name? It's concerning Blanca Gomez. I have something written here. However, I have this horrible cough. Would it be okay to have a friend of mine read it for me?
If, you want to read?
What I wrote.
Well, if you can do it in three minutes. Yes.
I can have somebody read it for me?
Yes, but your three minutes are going fast, so please.
He's coming. Do you want to read it?
On January 1st, I was in the shelter office when I was informed that Blanca Gomez was in the alley, Love's Lane, videotaping and...
Can you get closer to the mic, please?
And interviewing guests. When I walked out of the office, Blanca and Anthony were around the fire with our guests, at which time one never let myself or other volunteers know she was there. On approximately January 5th, myself and other volunteers were asked to not allow any videotaping on our interviews to be done on the shelter property for Chrissy Martin and Bill Edwards. On January 8th, Blanca returned to the shelter and began to start talking with guests, at which time called another volunteer, Monica, over and told her she could not be on the property, speaking or interviewing guests until proper interviewing, until, until proper guidelines were... speaking or interviewing guests until proper guidelines were in place. Per Chrissy Martin and Bill Edwards, at which time Monica walked Blanca and Anthony to the gates, then walked to the gate Monica and I invited Blanca to come and volunteer to see how the shelter is run and meet our other volunteers. Monica explained that we have guests with marital, mental issues that may not remember letting her interview them. Monica also told her we are there to protect their privacy. Blanca smiled and said, "Now I understand." On January 12th, Blanca and Anthony returned, at which time Monica had asked them to leave. For Chrissy Martin informed, Blanca was on the property but had left shortly after. Both Blanca and Anthony returned very hostile, stating she had every right to be there and was not leaving. She handed my, she handed myself, handed me her card while stating, "I am now here officially as Blanca Gomez, City Councilwoman."
Your time is up.
I'm sorry that we have a time limit of three minutes. If you have a statement you want to submit to the city clerk, it'll be reproduced and given to the council. I'm sorry about that, but we will try to allocate three minutes to everyone.
Hi, my name is Monica Fiesel and I thank you for letting me come here. I'm going to be submitting because I know that there's a lot of details that need to be iterated here, but I'm going to make a couple of brief things here. So, I am a volunteer at the Victor Valley Community Warming Shelter. I read a post on Facebook and I signed up on JustServe.org and filled out the proper paperwork to volunteer at the site. My first night was December 20th, 2017, and I have been there every night that the shelter has been open. I came in wanting to change the lives of the homeless people that are at the shelter and I leave every day with my life being changed. I have some concerns regarding your council member, Blanca Gomez. It is nothing personal, but I do feel that we each have rules and regulations that we need to follow. And as a city council member, I do believe that they should be held to these rules and regulations, just like we are at our normal job. Today I contacted your office and I asked for this manual that I read, that I was informed that every person on board should be following and maintaining as well. I do want to point out something really, really quick that, sorry, I'm kind of nervous, that when Ms. Gomez came on property in official capacity, showing a badge and handing a card saying that she is representing all of you at 9:30 at night on a Friday night, I reiterated and I asked again, "So you're telling me that you're coming on our property as an official council representative for the community?" She did say yes, and I did read here that there is a code of conduct that must take place. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get through here because I didn't realize that the time would come. Chapter 8, page 33G, regarding name badges in 1 and 2. And I'm not going to read it because you already know, because you all signed off on this. My question is this, if a police officer is off service and he presents his badge and uses it, is there a consequence? Would there be a consequence for false representation by a council member? And the safety guidelines that go with that. I know there's a lot, like I said, I have three pages long. I did a lot of investigation, I spent all my day reading this. The reason I did that isn't to point fingers, I think Ms. Gomez has a heart for the homeless, I do believe that. But you hold a meeting before this that's private and behind closed doors, does that mean that you're hiding something? Or is there proper things that need to be taken into consideration? There's a guideline for every organization, our guideline is, go join, serve.com, volunteer, meet with the proper people to find out what your questions and answers are, but don't come to the homeless who are there to sleep, to eat, and to get up and leave. This is not the time or the place to come in attacking volunteers who are giving their hearts. I work 13-hour days to make sure our homeless are taken care of. I thank you and I will be submitting this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure the city clerk gets a copy of that, it will be reproduced for all members of the council. Angelica Lopez?
Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. This is to address the videos as well that occurred.
Speak out on the microphone, please.
This is to address the videos as well that occurred at the Victor Valley Community Warming Shelter that is on a private property. It is not public, it is not funded by the city. We do ours by donations. We have three major organizations, Victor Valley Rescue Mission, High Desert Homeless Services, as well as Amelde Coalition, who brings in our food, our hot dinner meals for our guests. We are completely anonymous there. By being called out by their names, she may have put them in danger. Last year, we had someone come and look for their family member. They found their family member, took their family home, and proceeded to beat them up. This is unacceptable. If we're putting them in harm's way, how can we help them? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Brenda Sutherland?
Good evening, mayor and mayor pro tem and council members. My name is Brenda Sutherland, I'm a member of Amelde Coalition. We are an organization that provides, our sole mission is to provide hot meals for the homeless or the less fortunate. My husband and I have been a member of this organization for three and a half plus years. We've done this at our own expense, I call it paying it out of the Sutherland Fund. We don't receive any funding from the city or any grants. Our organization provides hundreds of meals each month for just those who just want a hot meal. That's it. I believe that we live in the greatest country ever and that no one should go without a meal to eat. And I don't know if any of you have ever seen someone really hungry. I've seen it in doing this, in doing this, I don't want to say volunteer because I believe it's more than just that, it's a calling. It's a calling to just reach out to those that are less fortunate. In the Word of God, it says, you know, Jesus said, "Feed my sheep." And that's what we do, we go out and feed his sheep with no hidden agenda, no desire, no political desire at all, but just to take care of those who want a decent meal. And when we come out there, they're so grateful. We hear, "Thank you so much," as we're bringing food in and bringing food out. I suggest that some of you just come out and see the people who are blessed by it because it's not just homeless, it's those families that have more money left than they do have money. We see children, we feed them and we feed them with glad hearts. And I'm just saying, let us do what we do, which is take care of those who want a good meal. And that's it. We have no other hidden agenda, it's just to feed those who need our help. And I thank you for the time that you have. And I will tell you that I need to pray for you guys more often. When I see what you have to hear and put up with during the evening, it tells me that I need to pray harder for our city and our city government. Thank you.
You can use all the prayers you put our way. Thank you, Brenda.
Trust me, I'll be praying. All right, thank you.
Kelly Maxwell? Rosanna Reese? Wait a minute. R-E-S-I-E-N-E, I don't know. Sorry. I have an easy name to pronounce, so everything else is difficult for me.
Right. Okay, I don't know if you remember me, but I was here last month on behalf of the Amelde Coalition. Up until recently, we had, we were a congregate meal site listed with the USDA, who was providing, started providing our food for us in March of last year. But basically, it consists of about a group, seven or eight groups. We provide, right now, at our own expense, we're providing the food. And as of December 4th, we have been providing meals at the warming shelter. Forty-plus meals a night, four to six nights a week. And we just take it over there and whoever comes in, they provide it. I am here, though, on behalf of the warming shelter and the concerns that have happened over the last week or so with Ms. Gomez. And I just felt the need to speak because I have not necessarily gotten a chance to speak with her at length, but I have received her cards, several of her cards, at different networking events out in the community. And to me, she presented herself as someone who was here to represent us and to be our voice. But I feel that there's a right way to go about doing things and in my opinion, her approach has been questionable. From what I heard, from what she said, because I also watched some of the videos, she was following up on some concerns that were brought to her attention. And I fully understand a concern being addressed. I would be the first to say that everything should be transparent and above board, but we all know that's not the reality that we live in. So, if there are issues of concern with the warming shelter, then by all means, I feel that they should be addressed and corrected, but you don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. This shelter is a result of the hard work of a lot of good people. It is being run by a lot of good volunteers in shifts. You know, they come in in shifts to make sure that these people are safe. And I know that I have seen Ms. Gomez, and like I said, this is not an attack, but when you're speaking out on something and you're not seen out there in the trenches to have an opinion about it, and you're not going to the people that are out there working with these people on a day-to-day basis, then it kind of undermines your opinion. And when I watched the video, the thing that disturbed me the most was so many of the comments started with, "I figure" and "I guess," which was stating that they were being made on assumption. So, I am not here to attack anyone, all we are asking is that you help and not hinder. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. I don't have any other cards from anyone. Did I miss any cards of individuals who wanted to address the council? I don't see anyone's hand, apparently not. That concludes E1. We do have the cards from all the individuals with name and whether it's determined by staff or the council that needs to be responded, you will hear from the council on that item. E2, report from the city manager, if you have one.
Just some recent events and upcoming events, if you'd like to hear them. Recent events, a live-stream blood drive was Wednesday, December 20th. We had 50 registered blood donors, of which 29 were city employees. There was about 44 units of blood collected. 12th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Peace March was yesterday. There was about 150 attendees, including three of our council members, Mayor Garcia, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Gomez. Upcoming events, Victorville Recycles Week competition. We'll be announcing the winners of that in February. There were 17 schools signed up for the competition. We had about 703 poster entries and about 70 sculpture entries. Those are actually the fun ones that we actually put at the entryway into the development engineering area part of city hall that are always on display. Community Emergency Response Team Training is, basic training is scheduled for January 20th, 27th, and February 3rd. We have a run in the park scheduled for Saturday, the 27th, $5 per runner. It's a 5K, 3K run and walk. And then we also have Shred Fest scheduled for February 3rd. That's where you can shred all your documents from 8:00 AM till 12:00 PM over at the Victor Valley Murph.
Thank you, Ms. Metzler. E3, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Any council members?
Can I start, please? Could I start?
Yes, go ahead. Kennedy?
We are all aware of the incidents that have been reported to have occurred at the warming shelter over the weekend. I don't claim to have all the facts, but I do want to say this, and I think at least three other members of the council will agree with this statement. The Victorville City Council was not present at the shelter. The Victorville City Council was not represented at the shelter. Whatever happened was the action of a single individual. In no way was it sponsored or approved by the Victorville City Council. Now, our problem is, what do we do? Not about the facts of the incident, that's not for us. What do we do about a council member who falsely states that she is representing, she or he, whoever it is, is falsely stating that he represents the city council, when that is simply not true? And that I'd like to agendize. I'd like to agendize it as a discussion item and look at our policy manual and an action item that we decide is necessary.
I'm in agreement to that, that's exactly what I was going to recommend.
Peter, is that a motion?
I'm making a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Yes, Mr. Kennedy made the motion.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion before we vote? This is for no definitive action at this time, but to place it on an upcoming council agenda. And so, there's no misunderstanding, upcoming can be from the next meeting to the next year. Do you have a preference, Mr. Kennedy, what upcoming means, next agenda? As soon as possible?
Please.
Okay, as soon as possible.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
It's not complicated enough that we need a lot of time.
Yes, and I am going to make comment.
We have comment?
I don't ever represent council, I represent myself and I represent the title that I hold and I represent a lot of constituents in the city of Victorville. Just like you three, four have come up here to have a personal attack, I can bring just as many people up here and say, "What are their circumstances?" And start speaking up here and having those individuals say the atrocities that I have seen and heard from their mouths, not from someone else saying what's going on. And I wasn't giving any names, so I'm not, there is no riff here. Council here, from the beginning of my election, obviously has been currently very dissentive. So, I don't find anything wrong with them agreeing to that, especially when there's family relations with Mrs. Gloria Garcia and the supervising volunteers. There is nothing that I could see that's coming from there that it would be odd or off from something like that. So, maybe we need to start all getting our facts straight. I will always represent the city of Victorville, whether you want me there or not. Guess what, I will be right there, talking to the individuals that I represent in the city of Victorville. No one will ever remove me from that, I have an election, come be Mac 2020, and we will see again the reelection, how that works. The voters speak. Those are the people that put each and every one of us here and it's very unfortunate that we do not work as a team, but instead we're very divisive. So, that's where we do need those prayers. And I know a lot of people have seen me out in the community and I will still be out in the community 24/7. This is my full-time job and I take it seriously and I will continue to be out there serving. Thank you.
Off the vote? All in favor, place it on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Four yes, one no. Ms. Gomez voted no to place it on the agenda. I only want to make one comment. Clearly, this requires the city attorney to read those. Clearly, this requires the city attorney to read those rules that we have, an issue and interpretation, because there appears to be a difference in interpretation. I have understood that no matter what my opinion is, or whom I believe I represent, my position must always be the position of the council with no exceptions. And I can only represent the city when I've been authorized by the council to do so. Otherwise, I may introduce myself as a council member but must state that I am here, or whatever I'm saying, as an individual and not representing the city council or the city in any way. I think that's a requirement. There may be a misunderstanding. Ms. Gomez was very definitive that she will continue to represent her constituents. You can't take that away. I believe our rules may be in conflict, but we need a clarification from the city attorney. If there's no objections from the council members, direct our city attorney to address that one specific item only, but not tonight. I think this requires him to reread it and issue a written opinion. His opinions are confidential and be delivered to the city council. Unless there's any objections. Hearing no objections, Mr. Attorney, I think you have it. Now we are, any other individuals for upcoming meetings? Mr. DeGretti? Upcoming council meeting agenda items?
No, thank you, Mayor Protam.
Mayor? Seems like that we may want to readdress E1, 2, 3, 4 sometimes because we get reports and discussions all combined into one, but we are at E4. Are there any reports from the council members? And we started, last time we started on the left, we'll start on the right. Mr. DeGretti, any reports?
Thank you, Mayor Protam Cox. First of all, I hope the mayor is recovering well from your procedure, and I certainly would like to say to all the folks that are remaining here, when you come into this position and you get elected, there is no training to be elected. And there is some minor training, but really, working together with people is probably the most simple thing to do and the most difficult thing to do. But I can tell you that I have been here off and on since the 1980s, and I really do enjoy living up here, and I really do enjoy working with these folks up here on this council. These three council members to my left have served the city of Victorville in different ways, and it's humbling for me to sit up here with them because I take this very seriously. But you went and see me out in the community because most of the times I wear sandals, shorts, and a T-shirt, and I've walked by people in the store that didn't even know it was me, which is fine. I'm not there for that. I've donated many times to the homeless shelter, the High Desert Homeless Shelter. I've asked them what they need. I don't just give them stuff. As a leader, I feel like it's my job to advocate and get those resources for all the different organizations that we have, but the actual execution of it, even with city staff, is something that, sometimes it suffers in translation, sometimes it's not perfect. Any organization has these problems. So, anyway, I appreciate you all for coming here and letting us know what's going on, but this is not new. So, it's unfortunate, but I think you've heard, we have some ideas about what we'd like to see in our next meeting. And, you know, there are consequences for actions, and people don't want to accept responsibility, that's their choice, but there are consequences. So, anyway, thank you for coming. We heard you. And again, it's been a pleasure to serve with these three great council members here to my left. And I know none of us would ever do anything like that, so I'd like to also say, the city council of Victorville was not represented.
Mr. Kennedy?
Just one thing I'd like to add to Eric's comments. I think he's right on. Last time I got elected with 3,020 votes. I beat Lionel Do by eleven votes. Lionel's a great guy. He would have done a great job on this council. I barely got elected. The time before that, it was 3,500. I'm going to tell you something. I don't represent those 3,000 people. I represent every single person in this room and every single person in this city. I don't represent just the people who voted for me. I don't represent one group. I don't represent just poor people. I don't represent just rich people, or just golfers, or just business people, or just men, or just women. I represent every single living soul in this city. And every decision I try to, I make, I hope does the best for most of those people because it's not going to help everybody. The best for most, that's all I hope for. And that's our job. Every one of us has that job.
Councilmember, Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Well, like the rest of the council members here, of course, you know, there's four of us that follow the rules. Everywhere you go, it doesn't matter where you're at, what you're doing. Number one, when we got elected, we knew we had to follow rules and regulations, and not just when it was suitable for us, but all the time. And it's not about us, it's about all the people within our city, and not just our city, all municipalities, because you have to treat everyone equally. But the problem that I see here is that we're trying, or there is a person that wants to make rules that only fit that one person. And she stated that she will continue doing it. Well, that's not acceptable. We have to follow the rules, the guidelines that are before us, and that's what we're doing, and we're doing it for the people. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Councilmember Gomez?
So first, I would like to, wait, hold on, let me find my place here. Okay. I would like to state that last month, when I mentioned Mrs. Collins' name, it was my intent to have others perceive that she was being singled out by me. On the contrary, it was my intent to ask why the city of Victorville had not allowed anybody to attend the intra-agency council on homelessness. So if there was any miscommunication, I wanted to take the opportunity now to say, my intent was not to call out Mrs. Collins. On the contrary, I think she's doing a wonderful job. Sometimes when I say certain things with my tonality, they can be taken or misinterpreted, so I made sure I would apologize to her so that no one thinks that I was trying to pick on her because that was not what I was trying to do. And also, attending the Martin Luther King Peace March on the 15th was a pleasant experience. Reverend Rita Jackson provided a powerful message for his listeners and its audience. This event takes effect yearly on MLK's birthday at 10:00 in front of the courthouse. And then we have a time and point homeless count, which takes place January 25th. The city of Victorville will be meeting in Conference Room D at 5:00 in the morning, and we'll leaving at, we'll be leaving at 6:00 in the morning. I hope to see you guys there. Please share among groups. This is an importantly yearly event because this will help provide resources for the homeless. The next training actually for this meeting is tomorrow, January 17th at 6:00 PM, and they're located at 15010 Palmdale Road in Victorville. Sponsored or approved by the city of Victorville, not about the facts of the incident, which all I'm trying to say basically is, we're trying to represent, whether it's at the city level or whoever wants to be involved, we're trying to make the best efforts. Y también quiero decir feliz año nuevo y les deseo un próspero año nuevo y continuemos a trabajar juntos con éxito. So basically, that's translated, it says, "Welcome, everyone. Have a happy new year, and I wish everyone a healthy and prosperous year, and let's continue to work for a better Victorville." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for attending. I hope that you have gained something from attending this meeting and gotten information that's useful. I know that many of you will leave with some questions. Do not hesitate to contact someone at City Hall, city manager, contact me. I think my number is located on any telephone pole, maybe by the calls I get, but that's why we're here. We're here to serve the public. We have no other reason to exist, and hopefully, we will continue to serve as best as we can. I appreciate every one of you showing up, participating in the process. Hope you enjoyed it, and thank you very much for attending, and have a very, very good night. Meeting is adjourned.